Good evening. I would like to call the licensees board to order. We have two items on the agenda. Item number one, approval of minutes from the regular meeting December 20th, 2021.
Motion to approve.
Second, any corrections or additions? If none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose? Motion carried. Item number two, appointment of Agent Leanne M. Rivera to Quick Trip Number 136, 1750, South Silverbrook Drive.
Motion to approve.
Second, any questions? If none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose? Motion carried. Being no further business before the licensees board, I adjourn.
Thank you for taking care of that for me, Alderman Butchlick, and good evening. I'd like to call to order the City of West Bend Common Council Meeting for January 3rd. Note that we do have a quorum with Alderman Kennedy absent and excused. Please join us to rise with the Pledge of Allegiance. All right, we have nine items on our agenda, the first being approval of the minutes, the Common Council Regular Meeting Minutes for December 20th.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Thank you, Model and Allen. Any comments or corrections? Hearing none, all those in favor simply saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. And then we'll go on to the real reason we're all here tonight for presentations, the Adult School Crossing Guard Recognition Week for January 9th through 15th. I will read this into the record. I'm sorry, let me ask for motion first.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Thank you. Allen and Burquist, all those in favor simply saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. And this still reads, "Whereas school crossing guards stand faithfully at their posts along busy intersections in every kind of weather while dealing with distracted and speeding motorists to complete their charge of safely assisting schoolchildren across the street, and whereas school crossing guards provide children a familiar face every morning, keep an eye on their well-being, and alert the police department to dangerous drivers and driving conditions, and whereas school crossing guards help reinforce in the minds of the young people they assist the importance of traffic hazard identification and safe street crossing behavior, and whereas local declarations, police department honors and especially smiles and kind words from children help to convey the gratitude of our community for the life-saving and injury-reducing role that school crossing guards play. Now therefore, I, Kristoffy Jenkins, Mayor of the great city of West Bend, do hereby proclaim, January 9th through 15th, 2022, to be designated as Adult School Crossing Guard Recognition Week for the wonderful assistance they provide to our schoolchildren." Let's give them a round of applause. So we have some of these fine folks here. I'm going to turn it over to Captain Darren, who's going to say a few words.
Thank you, I'll keep it brief. If you want to know the definition of public servant, you see eight prime examples in front of you, folks at home. This is 50% of our force. We have 16 crossing guards that are out there every day, every school day, in the morning, at night, rain, sleet, snow, cold. You probably drive by them. I'm begging you all, when you do drive by, a beep and a wave. It goes a small way to thanking you, but these are the people that get our kids to school safe in this safe community, so can't say enough for you. Thank you very much for everything you do.
Thank you. Thank you so much, thanks for being here. And with that, I will recess the Common Council to Public Works.
Okay. We have two items on the agenda for the Board of Public Works. Item number one, we have the regular meeting from December 20th, 2021. Approval of the minutes.
Motion approved.
Second. Any questions or delegations? If none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carried. Item number two, permission to bid various phases Riverwalk West reconstruction. Jake, you're going to take this?
Yes.
Thank you.
You guys are stuck with me tonight, thanks. Good evening, everyone. Permission to bid the Riverwalk project. This is pretty exciting times. We've been talking about the Riverwalk in West Bend for many years, some might say for a couple of decades as far as improving it fully. It was last reconstructed in the early 80s on this side, and the west side, as you know, was all completed in, I'm sorry, the east side was all completed in 2018. So we've been working on the west side design for the last couple of years. This project has come before you in the past as bits and pieces, and now the exciting point of bidding the entire Riverwalk Phase 2, 3, and 4, and Phase 4 has a couple of chunks to it. The utilities were reconstructed in Phase 2, in the Phase 2 area. If you're looking at the map, it's from the Veterans Park area to the south, all the way up to the, what's commonly referred to as Pocket Park Bridge or Moa Bridge, but the bridge that you can see crossing the river in your document on the right-hand side to the northern extent. So that's Phase 2. Phase 2 had the utilities constructed or reconstructed in 2021. There's still some finishing touches that need to take place for those utilities for that project, but for the most part, it was a very expensive and very messy utility project that took several years for We Energies to design and an entire year for the folks to construct it. Parks, Cindy and Mike in particular worked really closely with our businesses to make that as seamless as possible for them. The Riverwalk, as you used to know it, as our constituents know it, has been blown up, so the brick pavers have been removed. It's been replaced with T-bond for a short time, hopefully, until this project gets reconstructed in 2022. So this will be the first phase of construction in 2022. They'd be able to start right after the fish spawning in June, and we are in the optimal bidding time, so granting or giving your permission this evening for bidding this entire Riverwalk project would be best for obtaining the best bids for us. The contractors haven't booked their 2022 to date, 2022 or beyond construction seasons to date, and we're confident that bidding in early January will provide the best possible bids. Some amenities within Phase 2, you can see the walls, the step walls down and the ready rock walls in that photo on the right. That's a picture of our east side, so we're anticipating mirroring that on the west side. So the design has a few areas where the steps down to access the water will take place on the west side again. If we haven't talked about this publicly, in order to construct the west side, it's pretty complicated because the buildings are so close and there's not much space between the back of buildings and the actual Riverwalk. So the plan is, and the approval that Cindy and Mike have obtained from the DNR, is to actually construct a road in, not a real road, but like a driving area within the riverbed itself of the Milwaukee River, so they can actively work on the bank of the west side and build those ready walk walls from the riverbed itself. So no small feat. We don't know exactly what that's going to cost. We have some pretty good ideas based on the east side construction, but we're going into this bidding process with our best guess and anticipate, again, as I mentioned, the best bids possible. So there'll be, I'm not sure of the technical term behind it, but those sheeting, iron sheeting shoved down into the middle of the river, and then the Riverwalk would be constructed again from the riverbed. So the access is so limited back there, that's really the only way. We'll again be working with business owners closely. Cindy has been communicating with them regularly by way of email. We've had lots of conversations with them over the years of design. Several of them are waiting on this project to be completed before they improve the backs or hopefully new fronts of their respective businesses. Some of them have some plans that they anticipate relocating portions of their business facing the river once it becomes more activated again. So this project, again, really has a chance to be a precursor of great things for the downtown area as a whole. I don't know if there's anything else too exciting about the Phase 2, other than it's going to be at least a season-long of construction. Whether or not it's able to be constructed and completed in 2022 really remains to be seen. They'll be given through construction season 2022 and into '23 to be able to complete that project if need be. The next part, and included in the Phase 2 is the alley. So the current alley, you can see the front of it is not, has not been used since the Bridge to Nowhere is no longer standing, and the mall has been removed on the other side. This is the front-facing on the main street side. That facade will be removed. The structure, the superstructure will stay, but the facade will be removed and a really nice Riverwalk sign will take its place and be more inviting and open for people. The inside of that area between the two buildings, between the Historic Theater and the Husar Building, is in remarkably good shape. So there are some minor leaks in the roof that will be fixed as part of this project, but the structure itself, the plan is to keep it intact, improve it, make it more welcoming and more access to the river available through this corridor, through the alley. If you look at the larger picture, horizontal picture on the bottom of your screen, shows that alley, looking at it from a side view, and you can see on the far left side those steps down. Originally, we were anticipating, hoping to be able to slope that entire area, take out the deck and slope that entire area down to the river, and it just wasn't working out to be able to do that. So the main part where Mike is standing in that photo on your bottom right will be flat, so from the main street back quite a ways will be left flat and will be kind of a spillover space for congregating and maybe departing from the theater, and then a steeper set of stairs down to access the water. So again, really excited about the Riverwalk Alley Project. West Bend Economic Development Corporation, the WBEDC, when they were disbanding, contributed a bunch of money, and one of the things that they're excited about is the improvement of this alley. Riverwalk Phase 3 is the next phase, so 2023 and potentially into 2024 if need be. This includes the underpass. The bottom photo on your right shows what that underpass might look like going under Highway 33. Again, a project that's been discussed in the city of West Bend for decades. This project gets it done. It also shows, the center photo on the bottom, a kayak launch that will be constructed behind the most commonly known as Ziegler Building, that will be an awesome feature. And just to the top of that photo, where there is some green area on the larger image, that's a revamped parking lot that we've purchased sections of land from both the Crowell Camps and BMO owners to create that as public parking, recreate that as public parking, and formalize it as public parking instead of the public parking on private parking lots that occurs now. So really exciting feature where folks can come down, park, access their downtown, park, access the river in an area that they've not really been able to do so in the past. And then just showing, again, some of the lighting and Riverwalk features that we have on the east side that will be mirrored on the west side. Phase 4 is the area of Riverwalk north of Highway 33, so directly after the Point of Origin Park and the little island back by We Energies, so behind the brewery project, the HKS project. Part of that project is sharing tid money for this revamp of the Riverwalk. It'll have new concrete paved areas and some rock riprap. So if you, the photo on the bottom left is trying to depict what that would look like with rock riprap. Currently, it's kind of a jungle, excuse me, back there, and a cyclone fence, it's pretty unsightly. The trees have been removed for the most part already, and the cyclone fence will be a next part of the deconstruction before this is constructed. This would actually jump ahead of Phase 3 and be constructed also in 2022. So pretty exciting that this will get done in time to correspond with the construction of the HKS first building. And then the last photo, Riverwalk North, Phase 4, the island area. If you've been down by that island area where the dam is, it's a bit tired and cyclone fancy and dated and not very user-friendly, plus it's not accessible. This revamp of this north area will make it accessible and just improve the overall look and feel and be more conducive for use of that kayak launch area and overall pathways, and again, accessibility. And you can see in a second where the cost comes in. This cost wasn't too onerous on the entire project. I can't see that. So now the permission to bid finances. The far-left column on the handout that you have or on the screen shows items that we've already paid for to date, and the bulk of that is the design fee for the SEH folks that have designed this great Riverwalk improvement project for us and got us in a position to be able to go out for bid. Same is true of the next column over, Phase 1 Utility Relocation. That's been funded and completed for the most part. We still have, like I mentioned, a few finishing touches on that utility relocation project, but columns 1 and 2 have been completed. The permission that we are seeking tonight is for Phase 2, 3, and then the last two columns of 4. Permission to bid those phases. You can see the cost breakdown includes the construction costs and then the owner-direct purchase. The owner-direct purchase items are items that we can save money by purchasing them on our own and not having the markup of having it included in the bid. Kind of a great way for the city to save a few bucks on this really expansive project. And then the next couple of columns or lines down in the columns are construction contingency and construction management, and those are large numbers, but they're conservative numbers. And Mike and Cindy would share with you that they're concerned, but concerned to the point that we think we can get this project done with these construction contingencies. If, for example, in Phase 2 construction, we only have a 5% contingency and are able to save $100,000 of that $200,000, we can use it over in Phase 3 and wouldn't have to come back for a change or looking for more funds available. But they are modest, again, although they're large numbers, construction management is important on a project like this to make sure that it's put in place the way it was designed, and that's something that we don't have in-house resources for, that we need to contract out for. Pretty typical on large projects, but ones that I wanted to point out that there is some level of risk involved in this project. And then you can see the totals listed below. I don't know if there's any questions about that, or maybe we just flip through the last page, and then we can take any questions that you might have. Cindy's here from Parks. If there are any technical questions regarding the design or any of the phasing of the design, as far as the timeline of that, otherwise if there's financial questions, I can attempt to answer those for you. And then the funding sources, where are we going to get this money from to build the construction, to construct this project? Again, Phase 1 and the miscellaneous columns have been completed and funded. Phase 2, 3, and 4 are the funding sources that we're anticipating for this. I'll just walk through them because there are not that many line items. The $45,000 in Phase 2 is that DNR RTP grant that was part of the stewardship program that we were granted funds for in 2020. The next line down is ARPA money of 1.1 million. If you remember, we were allocated 3.3 million through the ARPA program, and we've been talking about assigning 1.1 million of those funds, those initial funds, for this Riverwalk project, Phase 2 construction of the Riverwalk project for some time. That ARPA money came to us in half, so we received the first half of it in 2021 and would receive the second half of it in 2022. So we have the 1.65 of that already in place. The second line below the 1.1 is entitled ARPA 2, and I purposefully asked Cindy to label it that because we've not talked about assigning a lot more funds other than the 1.1 until this evening. That $567,000 reflects the balance that's needed, and I'll talk about it in conjunction with the next line item, the 249,000. If you recall, we've received a large stewardship grant of the 45,000 plus the 617,000, and the Joint Committee on Finance held up that $617,000 grant, and we're unable to get that taken off the table, so to speak, from the Joint Committee on Finance and get it granted. I've tried lots of different avenues. Some of you have tried avenues with local elected leaders to encourage them to shake those funds loose. It has not happened to date. We're at the point where we need to move forward with this project and really can't wait any longer. So there's a, not loophole, but a provision within stewardship grant opportunities where you can say, yes, state, I know we are awarded and scored very high for the 617,000, but because it's stuck in Joint Committee on Finance, we are willing to take the 249,000, which is the number that's below the threshold that needs to go to Joint Committee on Finance, and by accepting the 249,000 and withdrawing your grant for anything more than that, they will grant us those funds. But because we've lost that balance, the 300 and some thousand dollars that are in between what it's needed and what we're granted, that's where this ARPA 2 number comes from. It's also not, it's more than that, it's not just the 300 and some thousand dollars, it's that amount plus the amount of the costs that have just gone up with ready walk walls and all of the materials since the last time that we've had this conversation. So our consultants, SEH, have put together the latest and greatest estimate prior to going to bid with the caveat that we'll find out what those bids come back as soon as they can. This is our best guess at this time. And then the last column is another large one. It's the portion of this Riverwalk project that's located in TID 9, and TID 9 is producing and has produced already these funds available for this Riverwalk construction project. Actually have those funds from our 2021 budget that are rolled into 2022 and will be available for construction in the amount of $1,129,000. And that number was on the TID budgets that you approved at the last meeting in December. So that should be a recognizable number. All those totaled is the completion of Phase 2. Phase 3, just walking through those funding sources. Phase 3 is where we applied for a separate stewardship grant in order to obtain some of the property, for the purchase of the property for those parking lots, and that's reflected in the $110,000. Again, we received that grant. And then the city portion of purchasing those, that property is $119,000. $296,000, again, of ARPA money from Phase 2, if you will, of those funds. And then the 2.2 million is the brewery, the HKS construction project. That's what's included in the project plan, that 2.2 million dollars coming from the increment that's being created by that new project. And then lastly, $180,000 of park impact fees. Again, park impact fees can only be used for new amenities within any existing park project, and we've identified between Phase 3 and Phase 4, if you take a quick sneak peek over to the right column, that $250,000 are also park impact fees for the new amenities for Phase 4. The last column, Phase 4, shows a $212,000 ARPA contribution, a $470,000. Again, that's the amount that's included in the project plan from TID 15, and then the 250,000, as I already mentioned, for park impact fees. I know that was a lot of numbers and information, but if there are any questions, Cindy and I'll attempt to answer them. Otherwise, please authorize this permission.
Do we have a motion on the floor first?
Make the motion to approve. Second.
Okay. Any questions? Alderman Dolnick had his hand up first.
Just a couple of things. Plan Commission is going to have the site plan for this tomorrow, on tomorrow night's agenda. The contingency was 10%. Max isn't here, but I thought 10% was pretty typical for public works projects. So that's not unusual.
10% is not unusual for more known public works projects, Rhodes. There are some unknowns regarding this project, and that's why they were asking for, you know, as much as possible or even more than 10%, but I don't disagree with you, Alderman Dolnick. I'm pretty confident in that 10%.
And I don't know if you know this off the top of your head, but once you subtract these ARPA funds, do we have any left?
We do. This comes to about 2 million, and we have 3.3 million total of ARPA funds.
Okay.
The last maybe funding piece that I'll mention before you go into more questions, Alderman Butchlick, is we are out for two grants, two ARPA grant opportunities that we applied for. City staff, Jess and Cindy in particular, worked hard on two grant applications prior to the end of the year. We anticipate hearing about those very soon. We were first told that we were going to hear about them by the end of the year, but that timeline has come and gone, and we have not heard yet. If we were to receive either of those two grants, that would go towards this project in a big way and alleviate the need for applying so much ARPA money.
The reason I asked is, and we're not going to talk about this tonight, but it would be nice if we had ARPA money for the streets, that's all.
Agreed.
Alderman Allen.
Yeah, a couple of questions. Jay, first, is Riverwalk West Alley does not appear to be handicapped accessible? Is that because we're expecting handicapped people to either go through, what is it, Pocket Park down at the south end, or Pocket Park at the north end and Flag Park, whatever, the south end?
Veterans.
Is that handicapped accessible?
The answer is yes. The alley is not handicapped accessible. Those stairs are significant and would not be accessible by any stretch of the imagination, and we do have other accessible options, those two that you mentioned in addition to the parking lot, so you could drive in on service once Phase 3 is constructed.
Right. Okay. And then you talked about when you're building up the seawall or river wall against the limits, you're going to basically use the riverbed to build a roadway temporarily, or is that going to apply to both Phase 2 and Phase 3?
No. We're going to construct Phase 3 from the land, landward side.
Okay. When we do Phase 2 then, I assume we're going to be required to remove that roadway. Are we looking to maybe increase the depth of the river at those points?
I'll let Cindy answer that.
No, the DNR is requiring that we put fabric down on top of the existing riverbed, put like a couple feet of gravel on top of that to make the road, and then take it all out when we're done. So we're not going to increase the depth of the river, they will not allow us to do that. Your question about the alley, the accessibility, SEH did a survey of the main street side of that alley and the river side of the alley, and the existing grade, if you were just to make a flat slope, exceeds 8%, which means that we can't even make it accessible if we wanted to, so.
Okay. Thank you.
Anyone else have any questions? Alderman Model.
Thank you. Thank you, Alderman Butchlick. Yeah, I guess either one. Was there at one point the thing on the alleyway thing? Were we going to have that open air?
The two ends of the alley will be open, but we never talked about taking the roof off.
Never talked about the roof, okay.
No, because it's a narrow space, you get snow and rain in there, it would just be a mess.
Okay, no, it does make sense. I just, I thought at some point it was, there must have been the entryways that we're talking about.
There's another alley on the south end that we're going to pave that's open all the way to the top. That's open all the way to the top and that one is part of the Riverwalk, so.
Good, 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 good. Um, and then just one more thing, and this is probably more of a bid board, a downtown bid board question, but, um, is there any cohesive plan for the back of the buildings on the way? I know the east side, we didn't have that to deal with, but we've got a bunch of building backs to deal with. And you, you alluded to it a little bit earlier, earlier, Jay, but I'm just wondering if the bids gotten together and talked at all about, you know, a mural that runs the hallway or lighting or, or something, anything, I don't know what.
We've been in contact with the building owners from day one on this.
I'm sure, yeah.
And as part of the project, a separate part, we're going to offer, we're going to ask the contractor to work with the building owners to, to give them a price, to do work behind their buildings, like if, like concrete paving, things like that, because there's a lot of gravel and broken up concrete. All the building owners that we've talked to are very receptive to that because they want this to look really good when it's done. And we do not want them to bring concrete trucks down on a new walkway once we're done. So we're going to give them pricing, but then once we do that, the whole, the contract between them and the, the contractor is all up to them. It's just basically, okay, here's how much square feet you got. This is what you want. If you want to accept it or not, then it's all their.
I realize that's where it gets tricky. Yeah. Okay. All right. Just curious. Thank you.
Okay. Anyone else? Alderman Allen?
Uh, yeah, just in terms of the bid board, the bid board has created a facade improvement grant program.
Yeah, yeah.
And one of the things that we did was we modified that slightly to define the backs of buildings as facades. So if you can get behind a building, that facade is something you can apply a grant to. So there, the bid board is looking at how, how this will impact the bid.
I'm sure. Yeah, yeah. Awesome. Thank you, Mark.
John, if I may, I think that.
Yep, go ahead, Jay.
Part of Alderman Model's question was regarding lighting and the bid board's also exploring new, uh, replacement lights, LED lights to replace all the incandescents that are on, that are so well-known and on the fronts of the building. They're toying with adding them to the current packs of the building as well.
Awesome.
Thank you.
All right. If there aren't any more questions, we have a motion on the floor. All those in favor saying aye?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carried. Thank you very much, Jay and Cindy. Um, I'm really excited about this. Maybe when this is all finished, I'll be able to take my wife down for a romantic dinner behind there. All right. Being no further business before the Board of Public Works, I adjourn. Okay. I will call to order the Finance Committee. We have four items on the agenda. Number one, approval of minutes of the regular meeting, December 20th.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any questions? Delegations? Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carried. Item number two, resolution, resolution, accepting donations for smoke alarm program. Good evening, Chief.
Good evening. You have before your resolution to accept two donations. As you're aware, we have a smoke detector and carbon dioxide detector install program that is free for any individuals that need it. Our goal there is to make sure everybody has working smoke detectors and carbon dioxide detectors. So we installed two of them recently and the, as a result, the people that received them donated money back to the program, which is really nice. Uh, Mrs. Patricia Roker and Mr. and Mrs. Donald Price both donated it. This resolution accepts the money, puts it into an account and then transfers it back into the account where we buy the smoke detectors from.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any questions for Chief? None? All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carried. Thank you, Chief. Item number three, a resolution accepting a donation from Jean M. Schneider. Good evening, Captain Daring.
Good evening. We, uh, maybe just editorial comment, we received a tremendous amount of support from the community through the holiday, uh, season, food, Boy Scouts bringing popcorn, Kringles. We had, I think you could've gained about 70 pounds, uh, per officer, per employee over the, we, so it's, uh, another testament to our great community and the support that we have for all city workers, especially the, uh, the police department. Uh, we, we appreciate that. Uh, one of a, a donation I'm asking for a resolution to accept is a $50 check from Ms. Jean Schneider. Ms. Jean Schneider dropped off them and asked that we use it the way we best felt. We are asking to have that accepted and placed into the crime prevention donation, uh, I'm sorry, crime prevention account to use for crime prevention programs and supplies.
Motion to approve. Second.
Any questions? There are none? All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carried. Item number four, four, resolution accepting a donation from Mary H. Bartle.
Thank you. Again, uh, looking for, uh, an acceptance of the donation, Ms. Bartle dropped off a hundred dollar check and again asking we use it the way we best felt.
Motion to approve. Second.
Any questions? All right. All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carried. Thank you very much, Captain. Being no further business before the Finance Committee, I adjourn.
And good evening once again. I will zoom, I will resume the common council. We are on the consent agenda and we're going to pull out item number two. So if I can have a motion for that.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Thank you. Kayla and Allen, all those in favor, so I'm gonna say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. And I may have Alderman Butch take number two as I'll be abstaining.
Appointment of Agent Leanne M. Rivera to Quick Trip Number One, Three Six, 1750 South Civil Brook Drive.
Second.
Did you get it? Alderman Burke and Alderman Allen? All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carried. Back to you, Mayor.
Thanks, John. And then we'll move on to agenda items for consideration. We have a whopping two items. First is appointment of our chief deputy, deputy clerk. Uh, we would like to recommend the appointment of Casey Miller over there, uh, who is our deputy clerk, right? And now we're looking for her to be the chief deputy clerk, so I'd like that motion.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Thank you. It's my motion. Second, any questions or comments? Hearing none, all those in favor, so I'm gonna say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. And congratulations officially.
Thank you.
And number eight, uh, ambulance invoice dispute for Michael B. This is on our December agenda. The resident in question did ask that we push this off once again. Um, before I really wanted to give him 100% that we're going to push it off, I'd like to hear just a synopsis from the chief, uh, and get council's opinion if we would like to hear this, um, or try to hear this item again. So Chief, take it away.
Sure. He asked me just to give you a brief overview. So back in July of 2020, Michael requested an ambulance and received ambulance care. Uh, subsequently was transported to Frehder at West Bend. At that point, uh, he, at some point it was determined he needed extensive care beyond what St. Joe, or I'm sorry, Frehder at West Bend, uh, can provide. So he was transported down to Milwaukee, Frehder via our ambulance. So he resulted in two ambulance invoices for that day. First one was $908, the second one was $1,400, 1415. Um, he did request, um, relief from his invoices back in 2020. He did fill out the proper paperwork, um, at which time I made determination that there was a hardship at the time for him to pay the invoices. And he contacted the Finance Department, which is our normal routine, and set up a $30 a month payment plan, which he has been current with. Uh, he currently has a balance somewhere in the vicinity of, it's on one of these papers $546 on the original $908 bill and the 1,41540 remains active on the second invoice. So I just wanted to give you a little background as to where, where we are with that. Uh, usually I offer the payment plan. Uh, very few times do I, do I grant exemption from payment of invoices. I will in the cases, extreme cases of, um, death or say resident, person is a resident of a Samaritan home and has no assets. Those kind of things I'll waive. Um, other than that, that I'll set up the payment plan or I'll set up a payment plan and then if they continue to have a dispute with that, I tell them they have to come here.
And for the council's background, we've, we've had some of these requests in the past and when, when they have come before us, I don't believe there's ever been a time where the council just waived it. If anything, we've recommended that they go on some sort of payment plan, correct?
Correct.
Yeah, which has been done already.
Um, yeah, when this comes before us at the next meeting, I'm assuming we're going to keep pushing it off a meeting at a time. Can, can we actually get a, what action you'd like to recommend as part of this? I, I know you'll go with whatever we.
Sure.
Tell you to, but there's, it's saying, we want you to rec, you know. I'd like a, a recommendation for what you'd like. Does that make sense?
Sure. And I can wait until next week with that opinion or I can give it to you right now if you'd like.
Either way.
I mean, my hope is that if we need to have that conversation, we can have it now. And then if we don't want to bring this back before us, so we don't have to.
That's what I think. Yeah. Yeah. I believe in all these circumstances, when you, when you give them an option to a payment plan, there is some responsibility for having an ambulance respond. Um, and there is a need to, at least to have some type of payment plan set up. So that's why we stopped waiving back about five, 10 years ago. We used to waive them if they had a waiver from Frehder that said that Frehder waived it. Um, however, over the last few years, Frehder waves a lot more because they need those kind of write-offs in their business. Um, and I'm not sure the city needs write-offs.
Alderman Dolnick, I guess, your hands up.
I, I was, I mean, uh, I'm not hard-hearted, but it's only $30 a month. And I'm concerned about pushing it off over and over again because in essence, I don't know if that's his motive or not, but he's achieving forgiveness every time this is pushed off.
I'm not sure if he's, I think he's still paying, paying him.
He is still paying?
Yes.
Okay. Well, that's good.
Right. And so he can explain if he has a change in circumstances, uh, from when I granted the $30 payment plan, uh, which might be the case, I'm not sure. I have not talked to him. I did not put this on the agenda. He had talked to Jay and Jay and I conversed and said that this is probably the place for it.
And any other thoughts? Yep, Alderman Butch.
Yeah, if, if he's making the payments on a regular basis and it, if there was a hardship, I think then his payments would have probably stopped and he just could not make it. But $30 really, in my opinion, isn't really that big of a issue. And if he's willing to do that, whatever we can, and I don't mean to be harsh, but whatever we can get for those invoices to be taken care of, I think we should continue to go forward until he really has a, a problem and an issue. And then I, I think we could come forward. But I, if he's willing to continue with just the $30, I think we should continue to just leave here.
I don't think he is willing though. I think that's why he's coming back here is because something either happened or.
Okay.
It's getting to be more of a burden.
It would be nice to know what his issues or hardships are.
And I'm not sure, Jay, if you shared the, the last letter with anybody or you're gonna let him present that?
Yeah, I, I have not. So he, he's been in conversation with us for much of 2021 and discussed coming before you several times, several different months. And then in December, um, asked to be on that December third, third, I think, agenda item and then, or agenda, and then pushed it while we were at the meeting to now or the 20th to now to the third. And now just today, I received another email from him asking to push it to the next. He just wasn't available today, I guess.
Well, if he's still making the payments, um, during, during this push-off period, I think maybe it might be worth waiting to hear what he has to say. If, if circumstances have changed, it sounds like they, it sounds like they may have, so.
Yeah. The only reason that I wanted to speak tonight was because I did get a couple inquiries from council members that wanted to know a little background. Um, so I thought I would let everybody know at the same time what that background was.
Yeah, but I think I'll emphasize and, you know, Jay can communicate that we've given him a couple shots. So next meeting, January 17th, Michael, if you're out there, uh, that's the time.
That's it, yeah.
That's the time to be here and then otherwise we're done. So, yep. Yes, sir.
Uh, at, at 30, what's our, if we charge people interest on an unpaid balance, isn't it 1.5% a month? I mean, that's effectively, he's making the interest payment. He's not making any headway on the principal, correct?
We are not charging interest.
We are not? Okay.
Everything goes towards principal.